Good evening and welcome to our May study session. This is our opportunity to dive a little deeper on some topics. Tonight Director Smith and Director Zavala are both otherwise committed and so we have a smaller group. I'm gonna start with roll call Director Barrows.
Here.
Director Decker.
I'm here.
And I'm also here. I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Snell.
Thank you Director Sproul, having trouble with my sharing. Yeah, welcome to our study session. This is really the last regular study session of the school year. We have, June is an interesting month for board meetings because of all the graduations. And so we have a consolidated committee of the whole and study session and a regular meeting. And the regular meeting is coming up sooner, next Tuesday than it usually does in our regular cadence. So just did want to do a quick check in regarding our budget development update. We are in the recall process now, reassignment process. We spoke about this in our last regular meeting, but as openings are coming up, we're going back to those recall pools and pulling teachers from that and have been making placements. So that's great. We still have more people that we would love to find a place for and that will continue into next fall. And then I wanted to just plug the graduations, starting next week and then continuing into the week after. This is a screenshot from our district page that has all the graduations posted. You can go to those in person or you can also watch online. There's a live stream of the graduations and all that information is available for the public. You know, graduation is such a wonderful celebration and each of our schools has some unique traditions associated with graduation. And then some common things like awarding diplomas and the role that the board plays in recognizing the class of 2024. So lots of opportunities to celebrate our students coming up, the amazing class of 2024. So I'll pause and see if there's any questions or comments about either of these topics before introducing our speakers this evening. Alright, so tonight we have Brian Graham and Chris Janati, who are curriculum instruction and assessment leads for pre-K to 5 and 6 to 12. And they've been regular guests on our study sessions, on our journey of taking the strategic plan and putting it into action and monitoring our progress related to that. And so this is kind of a big bookend report because in the fall, they shared kind of where we were at with some of the data. And now they're able to show you kind of what's happened since then and in the spring. And then they'll wrap up with another look at the dashboard. We continue to come back and forth with the board for input. And we're hoping to have that live for you at your retreat in August. And so it's kind of our last chance to check in related to some of the things that you're hoping to see with that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chris and Brian and please interrupt at any point in our conversation this evening. Certainly there'll be space for asking questions, but they are seasoned presenters now and want your input and your questions definitely help us as we continue to calibrate on what progress monitoring looks like. So Brian and Chris?
Thank you Jeff.
So Chris, I'll, I'll share my screen and for the, the way it was coming up before, it was hard for me to see anyone else that's happening and what's going on. So just feel free to interrupt if we need to stop and it'd be great to stop and answer questions and all those things. So I'll share my screen now and then just look for your cues to.
Thank you. Well, it's really great to follow those slides of the graduates at graduation because the, the goals that we're speaking to are vision of a graduate. And we're all here in this work together to ensure that our students have the richest experiences possible in their journey as they go through their education. And what we're going to be reporting tonight then, I think you can go to the next slide, Brian. So talked about our vision of a graduate. We're going to be talking directly to goal area one that has to do with the culture that we've created, that culture of belonging. And as you know, for the past several years, we've instituted a survey for our third through 12th grade students to measure those perceptions and feelings of belonging in the schools. This fall, we provided information for a kind of baseline of our third through 12th graders. And we definitely have some celebrations about their thoughts from this spring when they took the panorama assessment. So we can go to the next slide. We're gonna start with our third through fifth graders and wanted you to, to take a peek at who these students are. This past fall, we had 4,100 students actually participate in the panorama third through fifth grade. And this spring, our numbers have increased to 4,200, actually 4,239. So we do have more students who participated in this assessment. We're pretty equal in the grade levels. As you can see, it's pretty equal distribution and somewhat equal distribution male, female, with six students identifying as X. And you can take a look at our profile of students by race. Obviously, our, our largest groups that are represented are Hispanic and white population. So that gives you an idea of who's participating in this third through fifth grade survey. And before we actually go on to the data, I wanted to provide a reminder that our kinders first and second graders don't participate in panorama. The, the questions, you know, the reading that's required and the development that's required for them to answer these questions is a bit above their level. However, there is a teacher perception survey that our teachers can complete on students. They can do their whole class if they'd like on seven different indicators, the overarching traits. We've encouraged teachers, when I was a principal, to keep track of a group and then measure them in the fall. Again, there are only seven questions. It's pretty general, but it's a way to provide some input from a teacher level on our students. But we can go to the next slide now. So when we look at sense of belonging, this slide measures all the way back to fall 2021 to the spring. And you'll see there are ups and downs, but as we go through the years, it flattens out a bit. When we first started in the fall of 2021 into the spring of 2022, or 2022, we dropped about five percentage points. Again, we started high in the fall of 2022 and we went down about three percentage points during the course of that year. That was the year, last year, that we provided the assessment three times. This year, we only offered it twice, fall and spring, and we dropped by one percentage point. So we're pretty much leveling out from fall to spring. And when you think about increase in numbers, you know, could that play into some of these decreases? Maybe, but I, I like to look at this and think, wow, our teachers are making really intentional efforts in decreasing those experiences from fall to spring or those perceptions. Are there any questions about this overview slide? We're gonna go deeper, so I'll jump into that. So this overview is, the information is an average of four additional questions. And those additional questions talk about how well people at your school understand you, how much support students or adults at your school give you, how much respect students at your school show you, and how much you ultimately feel like you belong. I really want to highlight that 73% about how much support the adults at our schools show you. That is completely commensurate with another indicator. Supportive relationships is another qualifier in our list of questions in the panorama survey. And at the elementary level, that was our highest area this spring with 89%. So clearly, our elementary teachers are doing a great job of really fostering safe relationships and supportive relationships with their students. So kudos to them, not surprising. And we definitely have some great opportunities to grow as we look at, you know, students' perceptions about respect that other kids show them. At the school level, that would be a great question to delve a little bit deeper into, like, what does that actually mean? And I think I said this fall, it's really easy to assume with some of these questions, but until you start asking the students or getting into their level, you might find out something different. So great opportunities ahead for that one. But then when we go back to that broader 65% of our students in grades three through five feel that they belong, who does that look like? At the start of this presentation, we talked about who took the survey. So when you look at our third through fifth graders, our students who felt they belonged most out of third, fourth and fifth was our third graders, followed closely by fourth graders and then by our fifth graders. And that matched the same trend from this past fall. This next slide shows the student sense of belonging results by race. And it is a really, it's an interesting one. They, 65% of all students felt they were a valued member of the school community. And then when you break that down by race, there are, some are neck and neck and we have a few outliers on there. And I wanted to use this as an opportunity to highlight work of one of our elementary schools whose sense of belonging scores looked pretty similar to this. And they actually created a student advocacy and a, and a parent group to look at some of the whys behind that and to delve a little deeper. That's work they started this spring and I'm looking forward to seeing what becomes of that. So kudos to, that was Serge Anderson, who started that work. And then when we think about these results by gender, again, I want to point out that that first indicator, 79%, that's six students. But it's pretty even between male and female as far as those feelings of belonging and valued members of a school community. I have to say that when we look at the panorama data and we check each week to see progress, that these next two questions are two of my favorite because it gives far more of a glimpse into our students' lives and their thoughts and ideas because they are free writing. So as you might remember from this fall, there are two free response questions that we offer to our third through fifth and sixth through 12 students. And the first one is, what can teachers or other adults do at school to better help you? And so the first thing that you see when you pull up those results is the little wordle that they've created. And I want to identify because the biggest, the bigger the word, the more the responses. So math had 162, 167 responses. The word problems had 62 responses and adults had 36 responses. And I, I want to read some of them to you because I think it's easy to disassociate, but when you really hear students' words, I think that connection touches your heart even more. Math was again, the largest response in this question. And the overarching theme had to do with, help me more with math. Help me a lot better at math because I'm kind of struggling. That was a major theme, not all. Some kids asked for some challenges. Under problems, they, they, one student wrote, they could help me solve a problem, help me on a project, help me calm down. Another student wrote, ask how are you doing or feeling and what's the problem? And there was a great theme under adults at the elementary level because our elementary kids really affirmed the great work that their teachers are doing. A lot of students, because this question was how adults at school could help me. A lot of students said, nothing really. I feel like the adults at school are able to help me very well. And there were many questions or many responses like that. I don't think that the adults need to change anything to help me better. They're already doing exactly what they need to do. So that felt pretty good and really affirming of the work that our teachers are doing. And again, that connects to that supportive relationships that teachers have fostered. And then the next slide asks a little bit of a different question. And that is, what is one thing you wish your teacher knew about you? On this one, boy, we touched the gamut. You see that dogs is heartily in the middle. There were 26 responses about dogs, 24 responses about soccer. And just loved that students felt comfortable sharing pieces of their heart and pieces of their world. Family was a huge indicator. One student wrote that he, my teacher already knows everything about me, but I wish he knew that I love my family and friends and my teacher. And that was a similar, I, I love my family, I wish she knew about my family. There were some serious comments as well. A lot of students shared things that were going on in their lives. You'll see that anxiety is something that's highlighted and many students commented about how anxiety impacts them and their world. So wanted to highlight those for you and give you a little bit of a glimpse into our students' life. And Brian and I, as we were putting this together, we also thought, what's something else that we really want to highlight? We know that we have indicators around belonging, but what else is something that is, that's really exciting about this work? You might recall that this past fall, we pulled together a group, Brian pulled together a group of counselors and teachers and administrators to look at the panorama questions to see if they were giving us all that we needed them to. And this past fall, one of the areas that at the elementary level was revised was adding a new area around rigorous expectations. And I really wanted to highlight that this started out as a strength. The question is, how much students feel that their teachers hold them to high expectations around effort, understanding, persistence and performance in class? 74% is a great starting point this fall, but we actually, that was an area or an indicator where we really made some nice gains at 77%. And we know, all of us in here are educators and advocates of education. And we know that for learning to happen, there have to be those rigorous expectations. Do you want to turn it to the next slide? So here are two points from that, that indicator or two indicators from that question. And one has to do with when you feel like giving up, how likely is it that your teacher will make you keep trying, 81%? And how much does your teacher encourage you to do your best, 84%? So that, that, that perception of the teacher as the warm demander really resonated with me when I looked at these answers and responses. And I just want to give a shout out to our elementary teachers for their, their work with our students and to our students really recognizing that work. Are there any questions?
I'm curious, Chris, particularly in this last segment of questions that were newly added. Was there much variation from school to school or was it pretty consistent across elementary?
You know, it was consistent, but I can, I mean, there, there were slight variations, but they weren't significant. I can, I can pull that together for you if you'd like.
Well, I'm just curious, I mean, because I think for anyone watching or that might watch the recorder, like how this can then be used in school improvement plans or, or building plans, teamwork for next year? You know, I think that's kind of always where my brain goes to, like, how do we apply these to ensure that all of our kids feel like their teacher encourages them to do their best? I mean, because these numbers are great, but you want it to be even greater, right? You know, there's always opportunities. So I'm just curious, you know. And I don't necessarily need the data, but you know, if there were pockets where the numbers were outliers, you know, is there a special program at school or, you know, what are they, how are they applying this data?
Good, good question. Thank you. Okay. Brian, I think we're turning it over to you.
Okay, I just tried to unmute myself and still have the screen share. I think we're good. Okay, Chris, can you confirm that you can hear me all right?
I can hear you. You're doing great.
Okay, well, the, the slides that we'll share here for secondary will mirror what Chris just shared from the elementary side with a couple of slight adjustments as we go through. But you can see here the, the total number of student responses. So just a little north of 7,500, which is a few hundred less than in the fall with some variation there. And a fairly equal balance in the gender representations in terms of who participated. You're able to see various groups by race and also by grade level. It's nice to see that we had really high participation in sixth grade. I am excited to share some information around our seniors as we get to their sense of belonging that they've shared. You know, one of the things I was thinking about, listening to Chris, you know, just that we asked the question, how are, how are, how are the kids doing? How are things going in our schools and, and how important this survey is for us to be able to have a way to get voice from our students and really appreciate the advisories that have happened this year, having student leadership and voice to help us generate energy and momentum in schools. So then students know their voices are valued and that we, we review this information and care about how they feel in our settings. In terms of the sense of belonging data and what that's looked like at the secondary level, going back to fall of 2021, Chris and I were just looking at these trends and going, okay. And, and we've heard this from panorama as well, that it's fairly typical for the school data to have a higher score in the fall. And then there's the school year that happens. And as we assess again in the spring, that, that's not uncommon to see a dip in the score. And so we, we see that here from 21 to 22, spring of 22 going down a marker. And then also last year in the fall, gone from 40 all down to 39%. So we could say that we, we stayed at 41. I know there was higher goals and that's what the next slide will show. And, and there's, I, I think as we look a little bit closer, there's certainly some positive indicators that want to grab onto and then also look for the spaces to, to grow. And I appreciate the question that we had here at, at the transition is that schools really have a great opportunity with their teams, both student teams, teacher teams and within their family community to take a close look at these indicators and make, make goals and listen to the voice of the community and how we can impact how people are feeling. So this slide, Dr. Snell added, and I appreciate that. And so Jeff, feel free to add on if you would like to. The way I would summarize is we had student advisory groups happening at the middle school level with student leaders represented from each school and also at the high school level. And they read on a, met on a regular basis throughout the year and bringing energy and momentum to understanding the, the panorama survey, setting a goal and helping other students know why it's important to participate. And the initial goal they set was to improve from 41% up to 45%. And so at first, you know, it's unfortunate that we, we landed again at 41%, but we can look a little bit closer and find some spotlights as well. Before I do that, Dr. Snell, would you want to add anything else around the student advisories knowing that, that there was a lot of time and energy put into that?
Our high school students aren't big fans of surveys. So they consistently tell us that they'd like to find other ways to measure belonging or to complement the survey with other things. So that's a definite theme that we hear in the student advisory. And Chris and Brian have done a great job of looking at all of our assessment questions and bringing in staff voice last year to adjust what, what the survey is going to look like. And so we're going to include students in that. Some of that is because we're benchmarking across the nation. And so we want to ask questions that are going to allow us to kind of just, how are our high schoolers doing compared to high schoolers across the country, right? So, but we do feel like over time that we probably need to adjust, like with any assessment, to align better to what students are, how they're feeling and trying to get really good input. And so part of their plan actually was to get students to take the surveys seriously. That was one strategy that they had is just to like really tell us what, what you're feeling because it's how we're planning and, and, you know, gonna make, make some goals and set up some activities as a result of what you tell us. And so there were definitely some celebrations. And then the other frustration that I have with panorama, and Brian helped me with this, is that they for whatever reason like to group everything in 612. And as you all know, there's a lot of differences between sixth grade and 12th grade. And we can see our individual school data, but it's very hard to compare nine through 12 to nine through 12 across the country. There's, they don't have that normative feature and we've given them that input. We would really like to see that as partners and we can't imagine that other school systems wouldn't want to look at middle school to middle school, high school to high school. And so we're hoping that they'll continue to work on that. But the next slide is Brian helping me look at the data, too much information on this slide. But I wanted to just share with you, like, we unpacked ninth, 10th and 11th and 12th grade to really see, well, where were our ninth through 12th graders actually at in fall? Because historically, the panorama data, the older you get, the more critical maybe you are about your experiences. And so we were actually at 38.5% in the fall for our high school students. And then actually at 40.6% in the spring. So we did make some gains at the high school level. And so this slide, I asked Brian to help me complete, so one, we could be, make sure we're accurate. We're not, you know, misrepresenting anything. And then two, I wanted the high school advisory to see that their hard work did have an impact. So not only did they not go down, like historically, fall to spring is, is, is dropping, but they actually improved. And so, and we just had the student leadership summit a week ago Friday. And they continue to talk about how they can create better experiences for their fellow students. So lots to celebrate here and really appreciate Brian and Chris helping me bring this data to our student advisory.
Thank you, Dr. Snell, for sharing more of the details and that process involving student voice. And there's a lot of information on the table. I, I would spotlight in the 12th grade column in the fall, 41% favorable responses for sense of belonging. And in the spring, up to 46%, which is a, that's a pretty neat jump to see out of our seniors taking pride in, in sharing how they were feeling, wrapping up the spring. So that, that one stood out.
I, so, sorry, I just wanted to like, um, looking at the, I think to Dr. Snell's point, it was surprising to me that actually got more favorable as students worked through our system. But participation rates go down and I know that that's because there's so many different competing programs that take our kids off campus. So I think it makes the point of, you know, is there a different format or tool or other ways to collect data? Because I have to think with all the amazing program options, especially to our juniors and seniors, we're probably not capturing a lot of kids who are feeling connected and feeling a sense of belonging, but they just might be at Cascadia Tech or at Clark College or pursuing other opportunities. So, um, you know, if there's some stagnation in this specific survey format, like I would want us to look at what other format maybe would be easier to capture all of our kids, even if they were spread out.
And then I just want to add to payback on that. I know that when we met with the high school reps that were concerned about the RIFs, that one of the things when we talked about panorama was the timing of being able to log into panorama. And there were a lot of constraints which made it difficult for them to do it because they might not have been on campus when, like Director Sproul said, there might not be, be on campus when they did it, but they'd like to do it, but they can't do it from wherever they're located. And just too many restrictions around when can I, when can I fill this out? And most of our high schoolers, especially at the 11th and 12th grade are all over the county at, at some point during the school day. And so it's hard for them to log in and do the assessment.
Well, that's what I'm, I'm glad to hear that you've gotten some feedback because that was going to be my question is, I wonder if we could ask like the students like our student advisory council, because I know they're, they're looking at student belonging and increasing that. I mean, they have a similar goal. And so I just wonder about their feedback. How lo, how long is the Panorama survey? I mean, is it a lengthy? I think, I know we've probably talked about it before, but you know, if you have four questions to answer versus like 20 or 30, you know, I could see it impacting participation.
Yeah, that, that is one of the pieces. And it was a, uh, some of the feedback we received early on without looking, I have a document that shows how many questions we had in the survey last year, what I, which, and I want to say it was upwards to 74 over 70. And we reduced it down to around 50, but that still is a lot. And so that, that feedback is important. And I think you're absolutely on to something in terms of both the tool and also ways students feel we could increase participation.
Yeah, I know, because I know we've talked to them about educating their fellow students about like how we use the data that we actually do it. But I think a different question would be like, how could we, not just education around what it is, but like, how could we make it more accessible? Like how, how could we get more students to participate? Like fewer questions, like ease of access? I mean, is it something they can do on their phone versus they have to log into a device? I mean, all that kind of stuff. I don't know.
Yeah, and we, we also just want this to be one data point of a larger set that's reflecting students' experience. And so in particular, we have the senior exit interviews as well. Some other places that we can kind of cross-reference all these data points. I do think, you know, as we are on this journey now, our third year of looking at Panorama, we, we are better informed to kind of decide what we want to prioritize. And now that we have a baseline for a few years, you know, I think we can do that a little better than we could when we were initially using the product. And, you know, all of this is like, we're about right in the middle. When you look at the percentiles across the country, you can filter, as I said, high schools, middle schools, you can't necessarily pull the individual data like I would like, but you can kind of get the sense that we're kind of right in the middle of, of high school, middle and elementary schools across the country. And now that we kind of know that, and there's been a couple of years of that, we, we might want to delve a little more specifically into certain subsets of this data, like Chris highlighted persistence and high expectations at the elementary level. What, what might be that focus area at the secondary level? How do we get there? So really good input. Brian, do you want to add on to that, too?
It just resonates. I had, I had similar questions and wondered coming in and looking at all the different surveys, the number of times it was given. So honestly, I think that that is excellent feedback and great questions to ask kids. And we have a window to make some adjustments to improve participation and, and access. I, I think that we, we need to hear more about that. I haven't heard as much about the access. And so want to make sure we can make it as streamlined as easy as possible. Especially since most students, many students have phones in their hands and that can be a really convenient and easy way to, to get things done like this. So great feedback.
Um, just, I, I think something in Dr. Snell's that just really resonated, the cross-referencing the data. And I think that's what I'm most interested in now because we have seen consistent trends, but especially in high school, you know, the number of students that are engaged in activities on campus and how that trend. The other wondering I have is the, when we went from 70 questions to 50 questions, I'm guessing the time to complete the survey didn't vary that much. You know, I think that when you're sitting down to do a survey, you probably have a certain level of stamina. So, you know, I, I just wonder if we know we have a sweet spot of 15 minutes with these teens, like what is the most important to know? And then how do we reference it back to how else they're engaged? Because the kids that are in clubs or in a sport and pursuing, you know, they've already filled out their pathway information in sophomore year and they're pursuing a CTE course, you know, they're connected and they're, they've got a clear plan. I think it's as we disaggregate and find those kids that maybe are inconsistently filling out a survey or not engaged in a lot of different ways, like, I don't know, just in the sense of how we apply this to where we triage our improvements.
Well, and that indicator you mentioned is one that we absolutely want to get on our data dashboard in terms of students participating in activities and having a good way of tracking that and that crossing, you know, comparing the data points really helpful for schools and also help us know if we're, we're making a difference in the global picture for sure.
Thank you.
One other piece of Panorama that I think is important highlight is that it also comes with a lot of activities and lessons and engagement strategies. So it's not just this tool. So I just want to make sure that the board is aware that when we see an area that might be a highlight, it also suggests potential strategies and make some connections to some research and, you know, some of the, some of the things of that nature that we're not necessarily highlighting here. But it is more of a tool than just the survey part of it. Cause yeah, so just wanted to make sure we are interested in that.
Okay, so the questions that feed towards an overall score for sense of belonging, there, there are five for secondary. There was four for elementary. And I believe it's the fourth question that is different or added on. So just looking at the, the different changes from the, the fall. So how well do people at your school understand you as a person? Was down three markers. How connected do you feel to adults at your school? Up to two points. How much respect do students in your school show you? No change. How much do you matter to others at this school? Up two markers. And then overall, how much do you feel like you belong at your school? And those five together come to that overall score.
I have to say that the, oh, sorry, that the very first question kind of gave me pause and made me kind of giggle a little bit, only because how well do people at your school understand you as a person? I think between the sixth grade years and the like 10th grade year, they don't really understand themselves. So it, it's kind of like, well, that, that's a little hard to gauge because there's so much. We all know anytime, anybody that spent any time with a middle schooler through sophomore and high school, they're, they're just so discombobled. So it's such an interesting question when you look at from the perspective of what they're going through internally. I'm like, boy, that would be a, I think that would be a hard one for them to to answer. It would need, I think it would need to be kind of tweaked a little bit. I don't know. It just, it, like I said, it, it made me pause and go, hmm, that's kind of a hard question to answer when you're 13, but.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying there. We didn't really have options in changing or adjusting the questions, but your points well taken and you know, as you read the different questions, some may resonate. While others you may, you may wonder about. You know, why is question four included for secondary but not elementary? Those things would come up and it's just, it's part of the package that we get here. And I appreciate the, the lens. I think this is interesting, why, looking at these questions. And then we're going to show you another data set around one of the themes that we asked for perceptions around and it, and some pretty promising trends for our students. So I'm excited to, to share that here in just a bit as we get to another highlight. So in terms of sense of belonging by grade, we did get a chance to see the secondary or the, the nine through 12 already. Pretty high score in the, in terms of relative to the other grades for sixth grade and also for our seniors in terms of favorability across grades. As we look at different groups, as, as Chris shared, we were able to see how there were different groups that overall responded in different favorable ways. I think this would be, you know, it is very valuable for us big picture and also at the school level, level where we're able to look really closely at our demographics and how students are feeling, how families are feeling and our, and our measures around that, what we are doing to impact it. The next slide here is for gender. The final two slides in terms of before we give you a special stink peak highlight are around what can teachers do or adults at your school to help you? So the, the larger, the word, the more responses and I, I like Chris gravitate towards this because we get insight into what students are thinking and feeling. So in terms of understand, there were 47 students that used the word understand in their responses. And that's how that was flagged. And statements like understand they're not the only ones going through things. Try to understand me better. Understand that I can't always do everything correctly. Understand when a student is struggling to have patience. So really thoughtful comments that students have in regards to how teachers and adults can better support. The next word was check. And there was 43 responses from students that used the word check. And most of them were grounded in check in, check in on me. Check in with us. Check us, check in about our feelings. Check in every once in a while to see how I'm doing. A lot of that, that feeling and environment and the kids can be seen and feel like others see them and feel them, want to know how they're feeling in the space. The, the second question is, what is one thing that you wish your teacher knew about you? And the top one that is bold here is 40, had 46 responses that included ADHD in the response and students saying things like, I have ADHD, knowing that and that pressure is hard for me. I have trouble focusing because of my ADHD. I, I have ADHD, so it's super hard for me to focus. And when I, I often feel like I don't have enough time to do things. So a lot about the awareness of knowing students and what they're bringing to the space and what they're thinking about, what they're feeling, really powerful. The second most prominent word that came up in student responses, excuse me, was anxiety. 32 responses. Knowing that I have anxiety. The anxiety gets worse when I'm in school. I get anxiety when I'm called on. I have to speak to others that I don't know. I wish they knew I really struggle with anxiety and need support for that. I'm a perfectionist and have a fear of making mistakes brings anxiety. So really powerful, just thoughts and comments. And again, from the, the big picture that we're sharing, but then down to the school level with leaders being able to share with teachers and reflect on practice and how we help students with these things and the environments that we create is pretty powerful opportunities for us. And although the system may not be perfect and the survey we can enhance in terms of access and participation. It is giving us a, an avenue to hearing student voice and to be able to reflect on that. And so that's a positive thing.
Can I just ask Brian? The ADHD and the anxiety are kind of hot button issues for me, personal issues for me. And they've come up before in our surveys with our secondary students and what as a district are we doing to provide secondary teachers with a better understanding of how they can help students with ADHD and students with anxiety be more successful? Because it's also something that some teachers are really good at naturally and some teachers have no idea. And I was talking to a teacher in another school district the other day around SBA testing. And she has one girl who just sits there and stares at the screen and doesn't get anything done for two hours. And she's like, she just won't do it. I'm like, well, it sounds like anxiety or ADD to me. And she's like, oh, no, she's just, I'm like, no, and so just making sure that our teachers are aware of what it looks like and that it could just completely stop somebody in their tracks. And so I'm just curious, do we have plans for helping our secondary teachers more?
You did a great job articulating that question and how important it is as we're learning more and just seeing our students and being present with them over the, the 180 days that we, we had the opportunity developing our knowledge around that. And what I can do is share, I want to, and this is a wonderful lead in to the next slide here in a minute, to be able to share a few pieces that we have in place. I don't know that I, I would be able to give you the most comprehensive response to that and to know that I don't think it, it's about trying to give the right answer, but rather that's a question we need to keep asking. And, and how we're helping our educate, all of our educators to identify students that could be experiencing anxiety and how to support them with that. And we do have several different strategies and training events that we've had around trauma-informed practices, which would also support anxiety as well, but it's not all inclusive and students that are, are struggling with, with ADHD, whether it's identified or not. And, and be able to ask the question, what else could it be? What else is happening? What are some of the root causes here that we can help students with? That disposition is one that we can take. So I'm grateful you asked that question. And I think that we can give a, a more thorough response with more departments involved with that. I do want to share this next slide with you that I think also gives us a spotlight and knowing well, look at, look at the fall data from fall 2021, a, a, an initial data point around emotion regulation that was at 45%. And these questions that we'll share with you, there are six questions have to do with how well students can regulate their emotions. And going back in that timeline, we're in a timeline where the world had been flipped upside down with, with our schooling and what was happening in our communities and just being around each other socially. A lot happening because of the pandemic. And we also transitioned to a time where educators, we, we've had the opportunity to have a focus around teaching SEL standards around emotion regulation, around how we how we get along with our peers, how we respond to stressful situations and to have tools around that. So the adoption of standards, we, we have curriculum that is taught as well. So at the secondary level, we use Character Strong at the high school with the scoping sequence and Second Steps K8. So standards, curriculum, and the other piece that has come into play this year around the mental health grants that we've received and having mental health therapists in our secondary schools. And we have, we have schools asking for tier two social emotional curriculum to support. And we have, we have schools asking for tier two social emotional curriculum to support with anxiety and and pieces like this, which is exciting that our schools are looking at it closely. And so as you look at the results of emotion regulation, this is pretty exciting just to think in schools in general and also in our communities, it may not feel like it all the time. But what we're seeing with perceptions that students are feeling like in these responses that they're having more support in their own control or regulating emotions. The score was seventieth percentile nationally, which I thought was notable as well, which is why I wanted to share it with you. Even more notable is the six questions. All six of them have really positive indicators, two or more points on each one. So I'll just read the questions and then I mean, it is a promising trend. When you're feeling pressured, how easily can you stay in control? Up to markers. How often are you able to pull yourself out of a bad mood? Up four percent. When everyone around you gets angry, how relaxed can you stay up to? How often are you able to control your emotions when you need to? Up three. Once you get upset, how often can you get yourself to relax up three markers? When things go wrong for you, how calm are you able to remain? Up as well. Certainly not in, not there yet. But it's, it's nice to know we're on a journey and have some vision and direction with this that's having an impact. So maybe I'll, I think that's my, it is the last slide we had here under panorama for secondary. Are there? You've asked some great questions in the session. Are there other questions that are coming to mind that that you would want to ask?
Okay.
I, I'm sorry, just, um, and this goes back to the student advisory work and helping students realize why this is important, but and I know we've talked about it before, but how is this shared back to the student body? Like, is there any consistent mechanism? Because I think this is especially for our older students, this would be interesting to look at, but I just don't know what opportunities they necessarily have.
Yeah, that's a great question and one that that I don't have a strong answer to, to say, I know what's happening in every building. Student leadership team, this would be a great data point for them to be utilizing and sharing with and and really stretching it as far as they would like to, but I that that's a wonderful question and one that can be shared as as feedback and opportunity for our school leaders to facilitate with with students in their buildings.
At the student advisory level, we've modeled a data dive where what do you notice and when do you wonder about the data? And then when we do student advisory, we rotate between in person and Zoom. And so when we do the Zoom ones, we typically do the data dive. And so we'll model like, let's look at the belonging cluster of of questions. And then we put them into their own school breakouts to to follow through that with that protocol. And then the hope is then that gets replicated through whatever structures that they have. As we get better at this, and then we can start to maybe dictate a little bit more based on like what we've seen over the last three years, like, we're going to focus on this. And we would like each school to do this. Not just with students, but also in the student centered equity teams that each school has related to the equity policy implementation. So I think it's a really great observation as well on just the opportunity for students to engage with this data. You know, we've seen that when students help set their own goals related to like iReady and stretch goals that it has an impact. And so why wouldn't it also have an impact on on the SEL side of things? So.
Yeah, it just seems like it's, it's compelling to read through and to think about, wow, you know, any one of these questions, what percentage of the peers around me are not feeling like they belong or so forth? I feel like that would go a long way towards helping students feel invested in the survey itself, so.
Excellent questions and points. I got a whole page of notes here. This is great. So our next slide will transition us to providing an update on our planning for the implement, design and launch of a data dashboard to inform our strategic plan progress. And if you recall, we spent some time with you during the spring board retreat and did a mockup of what an initial data dashboard might look like, that's aligned with the vision of the graduate, incorporating the student centered staff, student centered experience and student centered community. And really having the VPS stamp on it. We shared some potential indicators and you you may recall sorting out different possible indicators and where they might fit. And we shared this idea of having and connected it to another website that you were able to review that had data points that were really accessible that then you could drill down further into. That activity of sorting indicators, Chris and I also facilitated with the Teaching and Learning Cabinet to try to capture more feedback and voice from important groups like our school board and also Teaching and Learning Cabinet to give us some direction for an initial set of indicators to design for the phase one of this launch. Also, to have a way to capture progress in our in our work plans towards bringing the vision of a graduate to life and the entire strategic plan. So that was kind of the mockup we gave you and and asked for feedback. And we're in the the phase of really intentional planning and organizing people to make it happen. And so Chris is going to give you an update on where we're at with that goal setting and also to to capture more voice from the board here this evening.
So as we think about this heavy lift to make this dashboard a reality, we really broke the work into three elements. And that first piece Brian talked about a bit was around that content development. So that plan really involved facilitating conversations with you with TNL Cabinet. We can capture more ideas perhaps tonight, but I'll let you know that you can still add ideas for consideration because we're collecting those ideas through June third. But this content development, the whole purpose is what can we do for phase one to to create as indicators for this plan? We kind of have an idea of a mockup of what it could look like. But what are those elements that really represent our culture, the work that's going on, the varied indicators, some of which we've talked about tonight, that are going to be most important for phase one? Obviously, our district, our students, there are a lot of different indicators that we can measure around growth and belonging and engagement. The list goes on and on and on. We've had separate meetings even with some departments to capture data they'd like to see as well. So there will be phases of this dashboard, and I think that's really realistic for us. But as we think about this content development plan that Brian and I are leading, that 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 data that we're collecting has a goal of June third to identify what those phase one indicators are. And that's pretty exciting to think about what are we really going to represent to all of the people who look at our dashboard because it's public facing to represent the great work going on in VPS. So that is one element of this big lift. We have another element, the design format and build, this is the plan, but we really have pulled together the dream team, if you will. Jeffrey Lukin, Frank Edwards, and Matt Recco are the leads of this, of this portion of the work. And this is creating this dashboard for us. They're going to be building the dashboard. And I call them the dream team because Brian and I found out as we were meeting with them that Jeffrey has actually built a dashboard before for another district and has some experience with it. And we know that Frank and Matt are just as skilled in the technical world. So the team brings technical expertise and experience. Additional members of their team, Natalie and Martha, also bring a sense of design and kind of pragmatics to the work so that as they build it, what makes sense and what is easy to, you know, just clicks away. So this is super exciting and this is going to be the biggest portion of the lift. Their goal, if you will, is to design this live dashboard for phase one and have it be available to us on August ninth. It's pretty exciting. Our next meeting is after school is out with them, but we have shared with them School District forty six that we looked at as our original indicator or model after. And there are, we already have some things in place that will make this data really easily accessible for them. And frankly, they're all really excited about this work. So that's the dream team on the the design and build. And then the last portion of this planning is really around calendaring all of this. If we've got varied dates that we conduct assessments or when information is collected, how do we calibrate that so that we can monitor progress so that we can analyze the results in a timely way and provide updates in a manner that's really manageable for those of us who are doing that work and communicating it out to the system. So Brian and I are are leading that work. And we've also invited the data quality team, our two assessment gurus, Dawn and Jenny, Frank Edwards, Matt, Jeffrey, and the directors. So we are currently looking at our assessment calendar for next year to make sure that that is incorporated into this. And we have a goal to have all of this locked and loaded with a plan for what that calendar looks like by June fourteenth. Are there questions? I know you're excited about this.
This is very exciting. And talk about giving yourself rigorous expectations. Really great work. And I'm excited to see what it all looks like. Oh, and it's, you know, we've talked about it for a while now. So yay, it's finally getting done.
Getting done. Well, it's pretty exciting when you think about the great work that is happening in our district and to have a way in which to capture that with really just a few clicks of a button. I think that's pretty incredible. You know, when we've seen some of these other websites, they've been frankly, really inspiring. It is important that we represent the work of our students and the the great work that our educators are doing too.
It's really exciting to see a plan. And just to echo what Kathy said, I feel like you set really lofty goals and getting this all done and together by August night. So I know that everyone will be really busy over the summer. I think one thing I have struggled with, I mean, any, any type of project like this, starting out too big and then it never goes live. You know, and but not necessarily, if you start too small, you don't necessarily have the architecture to grow. So it's like finding that happy medium, that balance point that we can continue evolving in it as we add additional layers of data. Because none of the examples that we looked at either last fall or most recently in our retreat felt like this is it, you know, they were examples where it's like, oh, I like a little of this, I like a little of that. And our conversation, I think we were all pretty much on the same page. But I guess my hope is that when we unveil in August ninth, that the architecture is nimble enough that we can respond to evolutions that if we want to go and grow in a different direction, for instance, as we disaggregate according to demographic data that we can kind of, you know, that we don't get too locked into a theory strict framework, I guess is what I'm saying. If that makes sense, because I have not been able to provide precise feedback of what I think the perfect dashboard is because I haven't seen a perfect dashboard. Everyone we've seen, there's some great elements to it, but there's also things that I'm like, we could do it better. So so I'm excited to see what you guys turn out. And I just I appreciate all the opportunities for feedback and so forth. And I do think applying it under the structure of our our strategic plan will be really helpful because we can anchor it in our three kind of primary categories and then vision of a graduate. So that will help focus things, I think, from the get go and then see where it leads us.
Yeah, yeah. I do appreciate both of your point too about phasing the work and like the comment about nimble, being nimble enough to respond and perhaps revise if needed. But phase one, we're really excited about and we'll get feedback on that and go from there.
And I think we've talked about it just earlier tonight, but and we definitely talked about it at our April retreat, but I think for all of the social emotional, I mean, the panorama data has been such a through line, but all of those other creative ways of capturing and it might not be phase one, but you know, to capture how our students are engaged in our system, I think will really start to paint a more detailed story.
Read.
Thank you. It really feels like a busy summer.
We'll be here.
I think the other thing that we know we have to have is the ability to update it and keep the data fresh. And in our research, we saw that there was a lot of great dashboards out there, but they weren't necessarily updated. So whatever we build, we might we're just using that lens that we need to be able to update, we need to be able to pull it, we need to be able to be flexible with it. And so we might trade out a little bit of functionality initially, just because I want it to be live. I want us to use it. I want us to come to it often and frequent and it's your point earlier, the directors, you know, talking about student engagement. Like, if we have a dashboard that allows students and staff to trust and go to it, then it's going to continue to evolve because it's going to be meeting the needs or the demands that they have around growth, right? To help us know where we can get better and where we can improve. So that's an important component as well.
And I think, I mean, if we have phase one launched in August, I mean, it could also be a great topic to bring to all of our advisory structures next year, you know, and getting feedback and what is missing? What is, what's adding value here and what do we want more information? I mean, you know, whether it's the parent advisory or some of our educator advisories, I think that there will be a lot of feedback. It's hard to give feedback until there is something to respond to. And so having that starting place, which is that's the big, that's the big lift is getting that initial initial sketch out there and then being able to adapt and grow. But Jeff, I agree with you completely. Of all of the samples, the websites that we looked at, some of the frameworks that I like the best were the most outdated. And so if you look at, oh, well, it looks great and there's all these great filters and dropdown menus, but it's not relevant data anymore. So it's too fancy to be functional, right? Or to be current. So finding that balance, I know, is is definitely critical.
And then I'd like to say also with the updating, making sure that we don't have a pinch point, you know, where you're relying on like one person to put the update in or just two people to put the update in. It has to, you know, there has to be a variety of people that can do it. Otherwise, you know, somebody goes on leave or whatever, as soon as you rely on one person to do the updating, well, that seems like you'll have a cohesive plan. We know that things happen in schools and in school districts. So to like eliminate as much as you can that that pinch point of. that pinch point of putting in the data.
Any other thoughts?
Well, I have a question. And this is, this is without any sort of expectation, but I'm just curious with this work happening over the summer, will there be any opportunity to kind of see any drafts before August ninth or?
I think we'll have a better idea about that on July sixteenth, fourteenth or sixteenth, when that's our next big meeting with our tech dream team. I, I don't know what state it will be in and I don't think they will be rushing up to the night of August eighth. But I I think I'll have a stronger idea of what the picture looks like on July, when we meet in July.
And even if it's not the actual the tool, that whatever the interactive, even if it's just here are the 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 data points that we're focusing on for August ninth, just like, you know, the update, even if it just comes out in our weekly update, just, just because there's so much that happens between now and August. But we, this is our time when we have fewer meetings. So, you know,
I, that's very anxious. I bet. Now, I think that'll be really easy to do and I'm sure that we could get some screenshots from the tech team too later on in July. So, yeah.
I don't want an additional update to create extra workload or slow things down. So if there was a way to just give us a sneak peek or what the work in development is without it being extra burden.
Well, for sure, we're studying that Friday before so that you would have at least, I know, not a lot of time, but before the workshop that you'd have some chance to play around with it on your own, because we know that when you play around with it on your own, you you get different levels of questions and experiences. So that's why we had set up that that Friday before is kind of the draft. And then wherever we're at, we'll look at the July board meeting to to just kind of as a snapshot, this is kind of where we're at. And can share that with the board as well. So then I can do that. It won't be Brian and Chris having to do a presentation in July unless they're.
We did come up with a, because we've needed, we want to get the work moving. And so we, so we set up these work plans and to set up some benchmarks so we can make progress. One of the things that Chris and I just processed through this last week and then got feedback from the design team was on the phase one indicators that we thought we could have access to data that would be manageable to have ready for the first phase and then some of the the hope, the wishes that we would have for phase two. And and so that's kind of part of that timeline and trying to build that out the right way and what would be manageable. So if there are priority indicators that you want to give us some additional feedback on, we can consider that and I just want to make sure that we can deliver on the timelines that that Chris shared in those slides.
Thank you.
I think that's all we have done today, Director Sproul. So if there are any other questions, I'll throw it back to you.
Okay, yeah, no, that is it for our May study session. Just Dr. Stell touched on it at the beginning of the meeting. Our June schedule is a little different because of graduation. So our next board meeting will be in person at Bates Center on June fourth. And that's a regular business meeting. And then we will have a hybrid committee of the whole study session on June eighteenth. The week of June eleventh, tenth, eleventh is graduation. So with that, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.